Welcome, everyone. Tonight is the 21st night of September 2022, and I call the City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are two public hearings, one on parking minimum reductions near frequent transit and another on the bike plan. Tonight's meeting is hybrid. The city is providing the option to attend either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those on Zoom, the chat and question functions are not enabled so that we're compliant with the Open Public Meetings Act. We'll have space for public comment at the beginning of the meeting. For comments on issues not on tonight's agenda, please limit these comments to three minutes. Public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Commenters were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 p.m. today. Emails were encouraged as well. Attendees may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothell Notice, city's website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. There's a call-in number on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to tonight's meeting. For those phone-in callers, staff are going to make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing during presentations so everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Tonight Chair Kiernan is absent and excused. Commissioner Dodd?
Present.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
Here.
I'm Chair Pro Tempore Gerd. Commissioner Robson?
Present.
And Commissioner Anders is absent and excused tonight as well. Commissioner Gustafson?
Here.
Great. In addition, tonight, we have Senior Strategic Planner Dave Boyd, Capital Division Manager Steve Morikawa, and Transportation Planner Sherman Gong. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For everyone, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And if you're streaming the live video feed, please turn off that sound as there is a delay. Commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'm going to be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, raise your hand or indicate with the microphone. I'll call you when I see it. This is going to help avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. Try to identify yourself before you speak, possible, and please mute your microphone when not speaking. Tonight's agenda, there's been a proposal from staff to switch the order of the public hearings. Is there any comment on that or questions? Sounds like we're good with that. So the first item on the agenda tonight is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as a sign-up sheet for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all the commissioners and are part of the record. This time is for items not on the agenda. No comments were received prior to 3:00 p.m. tonight for the meeting, but if there are any Zoom commenters, Senior Planner Boyd will call on them one at a time for comments up to three minutes. Are there any commenters on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. Senior Planner Boyd?
No, they're not.
Great. All right. Moving on, we have approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the September 7th meeting. Are there any items to discuss before we entertain a motion to approve? I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Dodd?
I move to approve the minutes of the September 7th meeting.
Second? Commissioner Gustafson?
I second. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Looks like the motion passes. Moving on, new business. Senior Planner Boyd, is there any new business for the commission tonight?
There is not.
Great. Let's start with the first public hearing on the bike plan. Tonight, I think Capital Division Manager Steve Morikawa and Planner Gong, do you have a presentation? Great. Thank you. Take it away.
Do I have to open a public hearing?
It is a public hearing tonight, and I open the public hearing.
Okay.
Thanks for bearing with me.
Okay, just getting the slides ready here. All right. Well, good evening, commissioners. And my name is Sherman Gong, City Transportation Planner. With me tonight is Steve Morikawa, the Capital Division Manager. And tonight, this will be a short discussion as we need time to finish the bike plan to its final form based on the previous comments expressed during the study sessions. We would like to have that ready for you before you make a recommendation to City Council for approval. We hope to address that at a continuation of this public hearing on October 19th. So tonight, we will discuss the text revisions we proposed for the bike section of the comprehensive plan to reference the new bike plan. We also want to discuss your inquiries from the last meeting in regards to various topics, including prioritization of school bike routes, additional safety and connectivity projects, design standard modifications, and a review of the staff's DEI-related actions for the bike plan. So as I mentioned earlier, we would like to continue this public hearing to the October 19th meeting to present the final revisions to the bike plan, if you are okay with that. Looks like.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Commissioner Robson, if you have a concern, please raise your hand on Zoom. I can't see. Sounds like we're good with that. Yep.
Okay. Perfect. Since this session is a continuation from our September 7th meeting a couple weeks ago, just a quick reminder that at the last meeting, we agreed that allocating funds toward non-infrastrucure elements to expand the bike plan is a good idea and that we should implement a few connectivity projects that would provide network connections of existing facilities to enhance the existing network until those ultimate improvements can be funded. We also agreed on the criteria we would apply to prioritize the ultimate vision projects. And finally, we reviewed the design standards that will be used for construction but with minor modifications to the curb ramps. Okay. Just a second. We're trying to switch slides here. There we go. There we go. Okay. So continuing, Sherman Gong here again. The proposed bike plan needs to be adopted into the city's comprehensive plan to become the official document of reference. Comprehensive bike, comprehensive plan bike section should reflect the new vision of the city bike network. Staff proposes to amend the current comprehensive plan to add the language shown here with some edits to the existing texts that are no longer relevant to the new plan. So I don't need to read that whole section there. Next slide. And in response to planning commission questions about where bike routes would rank if they were adjacent to schools, staff applied that criteria to evaluate those routes, and we actually applied the criteria to all the routes in the ultimate vision, which is included in the new spreadsheet. The revised spreadsheet shows that the majority of routes that serve public or private institutions or schools will rank about midway within the project list, although a couple of the projects did rank fairly high adjacent, that were adjacent to schools. This project list is a high-level review of the priority, the project priority to give us an idea of where these projects rank. However, staff will be likely analyzing how some projects could be strategically segmented to account for more detailed factors, which could then revise the rankings we have. Regardless of the results, other factors may determine which projects could be implemented sooner, such as cost or construction opportunities. Yeah, if you want to. So you can see, here's the revised spreadsheet. The blue, the blue, the blue projects you see there are the, are the new ones that we ranked, and those are the kind of, this is the top half of the, of the list. The light tan projects there, the Juanita-Woodenville Way and Meridian Avenue projects also kind of bumped up a little bit because we added institution or the recreation component to those projects. Okay. And that's the bottom half of the project list you see here. So you can see most of those are the newer projects that we just didn't rank before, and those are all mostly in the bottom half of the, of our priority list. So there are three connectivity projects that staff recommended to evaluate for implementation that were aside from the ultimate vision project list. That would, that would improve the existing network by connecting significant bike accessible sections that already exist. The fourth project was suggested by the planning commission last, at our last meeting for this project list, and that includes the 195th Street I-405 overcrossing. So this project will review what signalization improvements could be implemented to enhance the efficiency and safety of crossing this segment of the, basically the North Creek Trail. So it's a very important section of our, our network, so we'll include that in there. Another comment made last time was that the draft design standards presented to you at the last meeting depicted the bike facility requirements for each type of facility and really focused only on the mid-block sections. However, they also showed conceptually the intersection curb and curb ramps without much detail, as you see in the attached photo there. These drawings could be misleading to what staff is actually requiring for those sections of the facility, so the details will be modified to only show the mid-block segments. Intersection treatments are specified in the design standards to follow NACTO, nationally accepted guidelines at this time, and will continue to do that. Further detail for intersection approaches and transition points from new facilities to existing facilities, for example, will be developed and could be adopted citywide, but until we review how these treatments can best be accommodated, we're not ready to issue a standard design to be used and be a case-by-case basis. Okay. And then finally, planning commissioners also asked staff what actions were taken with the city DEI consultant to develop the bike plan. Though staff did not have an opportunity to actually consult with the DEI consultant in the initial outreach, staff did reach out to community-based organizations for input through our community engagement consultant, which also included actions taken by staff such as incorporating Spanish and Chinese language translations for the website materials and meeting notifications along with the printed flyers handed out in various locations, such as the UW Bothell campus during Bike to Work Day and at the local bike shop next door here. Language interpreters were also employed during our public meetings for the open house presentations and the breakout sessions. We also developed the prioritization criteria methodology with the consideration given towards the diversity, equity, and inclusion elements, as we described previously. And we utilized the DEI consultant checklist to work through a review of our efforts to equitably treat and include our marginalized community groups, which they concluded we So our next steps will be to finalize the bike plan revisions we have been discussing, to prepare a CEPA checklist for publication and review, and then we would like to continue this public hearing to the October 19th meeting, as we mentioned earlier, to get approval from, for city council recommendation. And that's all we have.
Great. Thank you so much. Commission, is there, are there any questions or comments? Can we stop the share as well? Commissioner Gustafson?
Thank you, Vice Chair Gerd. Sarah Gustafson here. First of all, I am happy to see these new projects added, especially the Brickyard Road project. And I do have a question about the DEI consultant checklist. I would love to see that up on screen and learn a little bit more about how that worked. Thank you. I can wait for the next couple of questions.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any comments or feedback? I guess I'll add, I want to thank you for hearing some of the feedback that was shared at last, two weeks ago at the commission meeting. I'm excited to see what signalization improvements are developed for that 195th overcrossing. That's really a critical component of our North Creek Trail and really close to the college as well, which, college campuses, which is really great. So yeah, I guess wait for you to recon. Commissioner Dodd?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, as always. I was going to say too, I'm interested in the checklist, but I would be fine personally with like an email, you know, especially since I'm sure it's one of those things that's exactly where you're going to look last, right? So I don't know. Commissioner Gustafson? Agreed.
Sarah Gustafson here. Yeah, I think an email would be fine, as Commissioner Dodd suggested. I'm still really curious about the process. Is it where you fill out the checklist yourself and then ask one of your colleagues to kind of audit your responses? How does it work?
So right now, what we're doing citywide is trying to get consistent across the department's methodology, and it takes time and effort. And we have a halftime person that is being called upon for everything at this point while they're trying to develop this. So what we did was, we did get a checklist. This is not filled out?
No.
Okay. You have the other one somewhere else you don't know?
Yeah. Yeah. I've got to revise that.
Hang on. Let me try to share this. So there are several things going on. So while in the capital group as well as long-range planning, and I would imagine in other departments, one of the things we're trying to do is engage the community as best we can. So we try to do the right things, but one of the things you need to do is make contacts and find contacts for those. And that's where we're struggling, and that's what takes time. So we're hoping as we go along, we're developing more and more contacts, and so we can grab more people. The other thing, the flip side, is to go through and make sure we're looking through everything through a good lens, not using our own viruses and everything. So that's where this checklist comes in. And so what we do is, the DEI consultant works under the executive office. So we actually met with somebody from the executive office. The DEI consultant didn't have time, and we ran through this checklist and tried to make sure we answered the questions just to, as a double check, to make sure we're doing the best we can at this point. That's kind of where we are. That's what the process we have so far.
Yeah, the, also, the DEI consultant is training basically our staff, our executive office staff, to have that ability to recognize and, and identify processes and means to, to reach out to those communities. And so that's kind of the stepping stone of where we are with that. And instead of meeting with the consultant themselves, they are trained to, to apply this to us.
So what if you want, what we have done somewhere in our G-drive is we have filled out a form, and we will file that with the project. And that's, if something that you guys want to see from an email, we can certainly send it to you.
Yeah, thank you for doing this. This is actually a really great checklist, and I think probably the best part of the checklist is not necessarily the responses that are safe, it's the conversation that you had with somebody outside your department. And then it seems like everything kind of is based on number seven, which is getting the contact and conversations going.
I think that's the hardest part for us.
Yeah.
And this is every single project we're doing.
Of course.
Is we're trying to reach out as best we can. We have the tools for translations and sending out invitations, but we're not necessarily getting a lot of feedback.
That makes sense.
So that's where we really have to do the work.
Yeah.
And yeah, it's going to be interesting. We're going to.
Oh, yeah. It's going to be good. Thank you for all the honesty.
Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I was wondering, and thank you so much for this wonderful presentation and your really thoughtful responses. I was looking at the, the map you handed out. I didn't, at least my copy from the earlier, our previous meeting, and I didn't notice that there was any plans to develop or improve the bike lanes along Beardsley after the overpass. And I can't for life for me remember if we had talked about that. I don't see it as being a priority, but maybe I'm misreading the information that you handed out or scanning over it. That connects down Beardsley towards downtown.
So that, that, that segment is basically the one that's going to front along the University Bothell campus? Is that what you're talking about, right? From 405 to downtown?
Yeah, I'm talking about, what I see on the map that you gave us during our last study session was that there's a folk, like a green highlighted portion for the overpass. And maybe I was just looking at the, the wrong map to get a full scope of this project, you know, to get the full sense of the project.
Yeah.
But then to, then heading from Beardsley down towards Main Street. Yeah, I didn't see that as being a priority project. It only saw prioritaries, priorities at Main Street and connecting across the North Creek Trail to, or, excuse me, 195th, over 405 as opposed to down Beardsley.
Okay. So just, I'll just give you a little background on what's happening on Beardsley. We are, we already have a project under design that will add an additional lane on Beardsley Boulevard, a vehicle lane, but we're also including bike improvements along that segment as well to 405. And then, which is from the access point to 110th to the campus, that intersection. And then west of the intersection, the campus is going to be building a project along with Sound Transit to add a, a trail that will be a separate path, basically, all along that, that, that frontage along to what they call Husky Village, the housing. And that will connect all the way up to 185th. And then from 185th to the rest, into the rest of downtown, will ultimately be converted to protected bike lanes. So the project is identified, and most of that is being built by others, actually, except for that most westerly part from Main Street to basically 185th, which will be a, a project for the city to, to finish and, and build out at some point. Hope that answers your question.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you for that reminder. That was, that was perfect.
All right. Thank you.
Any other feedback? I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to October 19th. I'll move to continue the public hearing for the bike plan to October 19th. Is there a second? Commissioner Dodd?
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on the bike plan to October 19th. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We have unanimous consent. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is another public hearing on parking minimum reductions near frequent transit. Senior Planner Boyd, are we ready to proceed now or a brief break?
A brief break of public event.
Okay. Yeah. Why don't we go ahead and take a quick five-minute break for water and so forth? I see on my time right now, it's 6:28, so let's just meet back at 6:35.
I'll move to continue the public hearing for the bike plan to October 19th.
Is there a second, Commissioner Dodd?
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on the bike plan to October 19th. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We have unanimous consent. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is another public hearing on parking minimum reductions near frequent transit. Senior Planner Boyd, are we ready to proceed now or a brief break? Okay, yeah, why don't we go ahead and take a quick five-minute break for water and so forth? I see on my time right now it's 6:28, so let's just meet back at 6:35. Corem.
Forrest Corem.
Forrest. Oh, hey, here's Claire. Hey. All right, looks like we're back. I want to also take a quick moment to recognize that looks like Mike Stanger from Arch is also in the Zoom room. Welcome, Mike. This next item is a public hearing on the parking minimum reductions near frequent transit. And tonight we have Senior Planner Boyd for a quick presentation. I'm going to open the public hearing, or rather, continue it, right?
You're opening the continued public hearing.
There we go.
There we go.
All right.
Great, thank you very much and good evening. Happy last day of summer, full day of summer, still half a day tomorrow, right? Partial day. I'm going to go ahead and dive right in and share my screen. Okay, here we go. So this is a continued public hearing from July 20th and on parking reductions near transit code amendments to achieve that. And I'm just going to give some, some background again for the benefit of viewers who might be tuning in for the first time here. The purpose is to expand provisions that were passed in 2020 for reduced parking requirements near transit. Those earlier ones were made due to state mandates. And when we, when Planning Commission made their recommendations to council, they wanted to expand on the provisions in those state mandates for market rate housing from quarter mile to half mile. And our recommendation to council was to defer that until we had a chance to look at options for adding provision, requirements for affordable housing with those reductions as we have done with, most recently with the Canyon Park rezones. And then as we have, have moved into this, we're considering some additional reductions and, and as I said, affordable housing provisions wherever we're making reductions consistent with the comprehensive plan policy to consider affordable housing provisions whenever we increase capacity as reducing parking requirements does. The map here shows the areas covered by those state mandates and their definition of frequent transit, which really is limited at this point to express and bus rapid transit service in Bothell. A little further background, we've had transit-related parking reductions going back to the 90s and that's shown on, on this map. So every, potentially every bus stop that can, development near every bus stop can get a transit reduction. The radius is only 660 feet in those provisions. So it's the darker purple circles that you see here. And the amount of reduction varies depending on how many transit runs there are during morning and, and evening peak periods. So, so those are somewhat more limited than the, the more recent transit, state mandated reductions. So as I said, we are, we started off by looking at affordable housing provisions in, went to, to accompany expanding the radius for market rate reductions from a quarter to half mile. And, and we've expanded on that further as we've, as we've reviewed this. We've already done parking reductions in our downtown and Canyon Park plans. In downtown, they now apply to all of the districts that have parking reductions compared to citywide standards. And in Canyon Park, all the areas, the pinkish areas where residential is, is allowed, have reduced parking requirements. And, and in Canyon Park was the first time where we paired those with affordable housing provisions. And then one of the things we heard early on from Planning Commission was that you wanted to consider proposed future transit. And so we have the Swift line that once we do the improvements to Bothell Way, will, CT has said that they will, they would like to extend Swift from Canyon Park down to, to downtown and the campus with a likely bus stop at, at 240th. They haven't actually identified specifically where the stops will be, but that, that does seem to be a likely one. And then our activity centers are shown in the blue, Precarried Road, the north end of North Creek Activity Center and Nike Hill. So those would all be areas where we would expect to get or want to get better transit in the future. And they all do currently have transit. So there is the opportunity to type parking reductions there based on the, expanding upon the 1990s provisions that I described earlier. Also, yeah, and that's on, on row two of the table that I'm about to present here. So last time, on July 20th, we reviewed the proposed findings. There are really no changes in tonight's packet other than adding this meeting and the notices for that to the, to the packet. I've left in here the, the changes that we made last time to recommend developing transportation management strategies in the downtown subarea to match what's being done with transportation demand management in Canyon Park and to add to the recommendation about expanding tools like the King Houndy Right Size Parking Calculator to, to recommend funding those as well. I have to report that it, in the early budget discussions, that, that doesn't appear to be getting a high priority, but I think the finding still stands as well in any case. So the, I'm going to focus on the proposed amendments on the main modifications that we've made. I did want to mention that Deputy City Attorney Robbie Sepler has, since the July 20th meeting, has reviewed this, done a legal review. And there are a number of changes in the, in the whole section that he recommended, many of them having to do with clarification and simplifying some of the language. And that's true of the, the table as well. So because the table is all new and the sections that we are deleted to put into the table are shown in the proposed code amendments in strike through language, we didn't do the traditional underlined strike through language on the table. This is, this is all new, even though some of it is, is essentially being transferred from the previous code provisions. But the legal review added off-street to the title of this table, off-street parking reduction table, just for clarity, and also added off-street and made changes in the headings of these columns. And we made some changes to make them more consistent. So in the, in the middle column here, well, in the, in the left column, it really is just a description of, of the category that we're discussing in that row. Middle column are kind of the base reductions that are allowed without any, any parking study, either by the existing code or provisions that have, are, are being made here. And then the, the right column are the reductions justified by a parking study and accompanied by an affordable housing requirement. And that's consistent throughout the table. It wasn't entirely so previously. We still have in here, we kept the option one and option two on row two. And, and those may apply to a couple of other rows here as well. We did hear some support from some commissioners to an option that, that didn't have any, any floor for reductions with a parking study. So option one does establish a floor so that we have a, something that we can do the affordable housing analysis to, to say, give a specific affordable housing requirement. Option two doesn't establish a, an absolute minimum, basically allows a developer to propose, say, here's, here's what we propose parking and, and then we would calculate the, the affordable housing requirement based on that and based on a formula that would be established by a director's rule, not, not embedded in the code. So that's where we're at on that one. And, and I'm going to give Mike Stanger an opportunity to, to weigh in on, on that as well. So the, as I've said, that, that third column, column does include affordability requirements where they, where they are appropriate or where they're relevant. Row four was modified. We had the, the reduction to point three spaces in the, in the middle column before and just an A in the, in the final column. But, but those were provisions that were adopted for, as, as part of the incentive zoning in the R 50, our, our 522 corridor district. And so they did come with affordability requirements for senior and, and disabled housing. And, and then we inserted a base requirement similar to what's, what is allowed in, in those downtown districts now in the, in the middle column. The row five for market rate housing could also, what's, what's in there now is basically the option one version, but it could also have the option two, the variable minimum and, and variable affordability requirement. And, and that is also, the, the option two is what's shown here for row seven for situations where in the downtown and Canyon Park subareas where reductions beyond what the reductions that were established with those development regulations allow with a parking study and additional affordable housing. The other thing in row six, in July 20th, we were saying that basically taking the reductions that we were allowing for corner lot duplexes and applying them to all middle housing. But since this is at least potentially, and, and that made sense as we were taking these forward together, but since this potentially is going to move forward ahead of the middle housing, we've taken that out and then we'll, we'll put that in with the middle housing amendments when they, when they go to council. And as I said, as drafted, the, the reductions for additional reductions in downtown Canyon Park would match the option two reductions above. So next steps, any other clarifying questions or comments? Public testimony, if any, and I'll check to see if there is anybody in the room, deliberations and then motion to vote and approve the recommendation as, as may be amended. And, and I guess the first order of business when you get to deliberations would be going back to those, those option one, option two questions. And, and when we get to that, I'll see if, see if And, and when we get to that, I'll see if, see if Mike Stanger wants to weigh in on those. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing. And Mike, don't, don't hesitate to raise your hand if you want to jump in.
Great. Thank you, Senior Planner Boyd. The first item that we'll do is questions, like clarifying questions or comments. And I see that Commissioner Gustafson has her hand, and then Commissioner Dodd.
Sarah Gustafson here, thank you. Quick clarifying question on row five in the center column. It looks like there's a sentence at the end that might not be there, and it might be an overrun from the reductions justified by a parking study column.
Market rate multifamily dwelling units that are located within one or a mile of frequent transit, comma. I think that entire sentence should be stricken. We replace that to just state where the, where the reduc, the, it's, it's covered in the, in the opening statement there, so. That's a good catch.
Commissioner Dodd?
That was actually my question, too.
Excellent. I have a brief clarifying question on number four of the table in the center. I'm wondering, the framing of the parking ratio, the minimum parking ratio is a little bit differently worded here than in others. I'm wondering why you chose to do that.
Basically, what I did there is I plugged in the existing specialized senior housing parking reduction, which admittedly is oddly phrased, but that's, that is what, what we have. And if, if you think it would help, the, the one stall per one and a half dwelling units equates to point six, seven stalls per unit. It's not, I mean, not be immediately apparent to, to all, but that is how the math works out. And so we could add that in, in there or replace the, that with just point six, seven stalls per unit. If you find that.
I would tend to say that they should all be consistent, but that's me looking at the code. You know, people who might be reading this professionally would understand.
Yeah. No, frankly, I, I, I would, I think that would be a, a change that would, like you say, would make it more consistent throughout and keep, keep the same standard that we have.
Interesting. Any other, oh yeah, Commissioner Westerbeck?
Thank you. This might be a question for Mike Stanger or, or Senior Planner Boyd. Section two, excuse me, in the table, I apologize. I just want to make sure I understand it, because I'm one of the people who has to try and apply this code to my work, and it's really complicated. But reduced by, by two percent for each qualified transit run, stops within 660 feet up to a maximum reduction of 20%. That part, so does that mean, say you're in a spot and within 660 feet, there's, say, three bus routes, and they all have 15-minute service, so four, four, I guess, four countable, they're looking at one, one hour at a time and saying, okay, you have four times three routes, so you've got 12 credits that you can apply the 2% to, which would be 24%. It's more than the 20 that's allowed, but is that what we're doing? We're looking at an hour and looking at every single bus route and how many routes?
We're looking at
Within an hour?
Two-hour periods in the morning and the evening. That's, and this is again, what's, what's currently in the code.
Okay.
Is what, what I'm capturing there. So that, to get the full
Okay.
definition, you have to go to the footnote there.
Okay, got it, do that. I've been reading parking code a lot lately, so I've been bouncing all over between sub area and the main code and then the proposed changes.
A lot of people don't like putting code into footnotes of tables, but it's one way to make the table, the table cells a little bit more readable themselves or shorter, at least.
Got it. And the 660 feet, that's, I didn't do the math at an eighth of a mile or something?
Eighth of a mile.
Okay, got it. All right. But that's the, that's the way to think about it, that two-hour period at a certain time in the morning or certain time in the evening, however many bus routes times the 15-minute service, maxes out at 20%?
Actually, the 15-minute service, just the total number of bus routes in those
Oh, okay, right.
Those two.
I thought it had to qualify with the, but it doesn't.
That's the new, the new state route.
Got it. I'm mixing the
Yeah.
code sections up, okay. And then the row five in the table, going back to the section that the other commissioners were just talking about, maybe this is a director rulers, or not rule, but determination, it's reduced to a minimum of one space per bedroom, provided there is on-street parking available within 800 feet equal to one-half the required parking. I walk around downtown a lot, and I'm sure it would go for a lot of Bothell. Sometimes there's a, well, most of the time, there's a ton of parking available, but sometimes there's not. Is there a time period, is it, is it like an average over a week or something that they look at how many street spots there are to determine whether their spots are available or not? Because it seems a little arbitrary to determine that.
Again, this is, this is what was passed in 2020
Okay.
with those state mandates, which did allow these reductions to be conditioned by the availability of, of on-street parking. And so
I like that. I'm just curious.
And it was intended to be applied just, just so that we could eliminate those reductions for areas that just did not have any on-street parking.
Sure.
So it wasn't
So like, oh, it's there, so we'll probably be able to count it. Got it, exists, okay.
Yeah.
So it's a little, kind of an easy application. That makes sense, all right. And then, I don't know, this is maybe just a, a clear, I don't know if it's a clarification question, it's just interesting to me. I'm, I'm still puzzled as to why we made the decision in our code to, for example, number three, housing units that are affordable to very low income or extremely low income, we still have a really high parking requirement. And the reason that sticks to me so much is I'm involved with sometimes affordable projects. They require an enormous amount of subsidy. I don't have to tell you and Mike that, and Mike's an expert on this. And they're the hardest to get funded. And yet parking is really expensive, brings in no tax money, costs a lot of money, and most people would just be happy to have a house, and they don't really need a house for their car. It just really seems like low income and very low income should be the same as the senior and disabilities, the point three spaces. I mean, even that's really high to me. We, we all know that, I think these are unnecessary and we should get rid of them completely, but for, at least for low income, very low income. I, I don't know that, you know, we're gonna change that maybe way too late, but it's always been puzzling to me because it's so hard to get affordable housing built.
It is a, a bit of a, a conundrum, I guess. And Arch has long had a policy that the, the parking, a parking space should be provided for an affordable unit, a parking space.
Yeah.
And in recent times, as cities have developed parking requirements of less than one space per unit, they've had to change that. And so they now have a, a policy that allows them to provide a space, or if, if there's less than one space required, an allowance
Yeah.
equal to the, the required parking. So that, and that's where, well, that's part of where this came, comes from, but where it really comes from is the state, the state legislation that gave communities the opportunity to do one space per bedroom or point seven, five spaces per unit.
Right, right. But I figure, you know, we're allowed to do less if we want, so just had to at least put it out there.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, if we're ever gonna tackle housing, we're woefully behind as a city, a region, a state, a country, parking requirements are gonna hold us back forever.
Mr. Stanger?
Yes, thank you. And hello, everyone. Mike Stanger with Regional Coalition for Housing. I certainly agree with Commissioner Westerbeck that nobody's more eager to cut construction costs from parking than affordable housing developers. Our experience, though, is that with the, the people who actually occupy the units that we, the affordable housing properties that we manage or oversee, is that they have cars, they commute to jobs and take kids to school and go to, you know, other doctor appointments and shopping and everything else. They need cars just as much as anybody else. And I, I've looked and haven't found any broad-based empirical research that demonstrates that that's, you know, otherwise for anybody else. So that's why we, we maintain that, you know, based on our experiences, that, is that people in affordable housing, you know, especially when the transit isn't great, really need to have that cost of parking on, basically on an equivalent basis to the general public.
Right, and I get it, it's an equity issue, too. If people who can afford to pay for the parking or pay for the market rate unit, get it, then other people should as well. And, you know, like you said, our, our culture, we've made you have to drive to everything, so we set ourselves up for that. Oh, appreciate it.
I'd like to check in to see if there's any commenters on the Zoom, attendees on the Zoom call?
There are not.
Okay. So with no public testimony tonight, I am unclear on whether we should close it or leave it open for a bit during our deliberations. And perhaps, yeah, let's go ahead and go into deliberation. And we'll make a, a decision about the public hearing after deliberations. So now is the time to comment more on, first, I guess I should ask, is there any more presentation that we should?
Okay, no, I, I can go back to the presentation, though, if, if you want to look at any of the language.
I think it would be good to bring up the slide with the option one versus option two, which is the main consideration for deliberation. That'd be helpful. But if there's other comments or questions, now is the time for those as well. And Commissioner Robson, if you're still on the Zoom, can't see you, so raise your virtual hand so that you can get my attention. Thank you. Is there any feedback on the option one versus option two that was discussed quite some time ago by the commission? Commissioner Dodd?
I would support the option with no floor for the second tier. Yeah.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
I'd certainly support that as well.
Yeah, I, I think I would also support it. I'm still, you know, a parking study, if it's gonna be paid for and conducted by a professional, it's gonna be like using the Right Size Calculator for an individual parcel. It's going to be custom. And so I would tend to agree, you know, like that establishing a floor when a very custom study for that point in time is done, seems a bit redundant and a little, maybe too restrictive. So that's my perspective. Any other feedback from commissioners on that option one versus option two?
And I would point out, we're still refining the, the, the table that was in the, the memo that would be the basis for the affordable housing requirement. But we're proposing that that be done as a director's rule and, and something that we can modify without doing a, a, update and modify without doing a code amendment. So, and Mike, if you want to have anything to add to that?
No, I'm sorry that, that I have some, you know, better numbers to show you at this time, but, but I'm going through a number of scenarios and trying to understand the, the different relationships of actors and be happy to share that with you soon.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And, and so we, we would certainly anticipate having, having that prepared for, for when, when we take it to council for adoption, so.
Is there a lot of work left to do before taking it to council, or would this be a pretty immediate thing?
Well, it's, it's really just a matter of getting it on, on the council calendar. If, if Planning Commission makes its recommendation tonight, we'll be looking for openings to, to get it on, on the council calendar. So, and we, so we're hoping that, that we would be able to do that. Now, the council calendar is, is pretty full this time of year, especially with, in a budget year, so hopefully by the end of the year, we would get this to council.
Understood, thanks. Not seeing a whole lot of feedback from the commission. Would it be helpful to turn in our packets to the, the findings, conclusions and recommendations? Now I'm seeing. Commissioner Gustafson and then Commissioner Westerbeck?
Sure, thank you. Sarah Gustafson here. I wanted to take a look at line five for the market rate multifamily dwelling units. It looks like for the base reductions, there's a one space per bedroom. So that would mean one bedroom, one car, two bedrooms, two cars, that might make sense, two people, two cars. But then when we get to three bedrooms, for the few market rate apartments that have three bedrooms, I don't think it makes sense to have three spaces required. I might use some of the language from row three, where you talk about a maximum requirement of 2.2 spaces per unit, because probably three bedroom is somebody with little kids and they wouldn't have cars.
That was certainly the intent, so that, I think there was something that got bollocked in that, that cell.
Okay.
Anywhere where we have a one space per bedroom or
Okay.
any number of spaces per bedroom, it maxes out at 2.2.
Oh, okay. That, that makes sense. That, that is something that I would see being added. But my second question is, do we want to get into the discussion of that option one versus option two issue in the second tier box right now?
Well, so we, there was a discussion and, and a majority of commissioners weighed in that they would prefer not to have a floor. That was in, it was first, an option in, in row two, but it, it could also be an option in row five, which has the same, what's shown in row five is, is the option one from row two. So that would certainly be appropriate, whether, whether you want to go with that. So that would certainly be appropriate, whether you want to go with the option one instead for mercury multifamily.
Yeah.
And then again, in well, row seven already shows.
Do you have a follow up on that, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yes, although I don't know if I should give it to Commissioner Westerbeck next. I do like the option two in general, but I am concerned about the ease of administering it. If we leave it all to discretion, we don't have guideposts. So I would leave that to staff to advise us on which option could be easier.
Well, you're right. The prescriptive option is easier. Option two would require kind of an analysis for each project, but and which would be included in their affordable housing agreement. So there will, any project that has required affordable units will have to do an affordable housing agreement. It's just one more, one more step that will need to be taken in that. And it's a step that'll need to be applied during the project review because they'll want to know what the parking requirement is upfront, basically.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
This is about the, if it's okay to ask, about the downtown transition district requirements charts. I know the current code because I dealt with this recently. Looks like we, not only did we change it to 0.75 per bedroom, but now it says studios and micro apartments. And, you know, micro apartments require a shared kitchen. Studios, just to clarify, studios, just a basically studio apartment, but it doesn't, it's a standalone apartment. It's not just the shared kitchen like the micro. Right? So that's a change from our current code, correct? Because right now it just says micro for the 0.75. Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Dealing with that a little bit right now. So I just wanted to see if that was gonna I understood that correctly. Thank you.
Well, and again, this is going back to the original parking requirement in those.
Pre 2017, I think.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you know, since then, we added the 0.75 for micros. And this is just rolling it back to the 0.75 for studios as well, the current one.
I'd forgotten about that. I knew we had the 0.75 and then we went to the one. But I didn't really remember that it was in studios as well. That's great.
Any other deliberations? Commissioner Dodd.
I might be overthinking this, but on that same downtown transition chart, there's a call out between pedestrian oriented retail, except eating and drinking, pedestrian oriented for eating and drinking, but then also other types, but they all have the same parking minimum. Why are those separated necessarily? Like, what's the what does the separation achieve?
There are some differences in some of the other columns in those.
And I guess the other question is, would the shared parking reduction not apply to those other rows aside from A? Because like, there's a lot of eating and drinking establishments that have, you know, shared parking setups. I don't know. I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to puzzle that out and follow the logic.
Yeah. This, these code amendments only are only being applied to residential requirements. So I haven't really much attention on those.
Totally fair. So this is just more for reference.
I see stuff we need to study soon.
All right. Sorry about that.
I'll give it a little thought.
I wonder why shared parking isn't more like 40 or 50% because sometimes it's not used and sometimes it's stay used. But we'll get into that another time, it sounds like.
Okay, I'm recalling it. So the thinking was that shared parking for a retail establishment that's essentially open during business hours for them is easier to share with residential parking where the tenants are gone during business hours. Restaurants and bars where the clientele is there during the evenings when when the residents are typically home, except for the ones that are out drinking somewhere else. That, so that I think was the rationale behind limiting the shared parking reduction to the retail.
Thanks for dredging that up.
Yeah, thank you.
And I do know when we, when we were taking a closer look at particularly Six Oaks and their parking situation, what we heard from the folks managing that was even, even the spaces that were being made available to the, to the bank during their business hours, banking hours, and and available to residents who are willing to not use them during, during those hours at a fairly significantly reduced rate. They were, those were not terribly popular, even though they were a much cheaper parking option. So I'm guessing that it's even more complicated now with so many people working at home. So.
Yes. All right. I'm not hearing any more deliberations.
I would like to ask for just a little clarity. So we talked about the option preference for option two in in row two. I think the row five, the market rate dwelling units, it was we only plugged option one into the table. I think that the thinking was that probably, again, just to simplify it and that that might be a fairly common type, but, but it certainly is open to to the commission to recommend option one there as well as in row two and row seven.
What are commissioners' thoughts about the last column in row five? Commissioner Robson?
I am so sorry, my friends. Where are you in the document?
We're looking on page 22 of the packet. And there's a table, table B, off-street parking reduction table. And when we reference the number, that number is precedes the each row. There we go. Thank you for bringing that up.
So I listed option one and option two in, in row two, which is which would basically apply to all of those bus stops outside of downtown, outside of the more frequent recent reductions. And then, but I didn't list the option one and probably should have for option for row five, the market rate housing that is up to half mile from frequent transit where a parking study is done.
They both kind of say the same thing. Am I missing something here? They both say half mile, larger within one half mile frequent transit stop. One half mile frequent transit. It looked like maybe I'm just not catching it. They say the same thing in different words.
I'm, which the
Line five, column three and number two, option one. Or maybe I'm not following conversation at all. Yeah, they're the same thing.
So the difference is that I just, I didn't put option two in, in row five.
Oh, right. Well, I'd love to see option two and number five personally.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, yeah. I think we talked about that earlier and I'm for that absolutely with no floor.
Commissioner Dodd?
Now that I'm following, which I appreciate everyone getting us all there. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Westerbeck. I think having option two in row five makes sense.
Can you stop sharing this screen real quick? Yeah, there we go. Commissioner Robson?
I just would like to say I agree with also including that option in for both rows.
Okay, so that's a majority of the commissioners in attendance. So I'll make that change. And so that'll be consistent throughout that third column that, or at least for rows two, five and seven.
Great.
And then I will fix the language in that, that one truncated sentence, remove that from.
Number five, column two.
Row five, column two. And then the other one was, would you like to change the standard for, the base standard for senior from one parking space per 1.5 units to 0.67 spaces per unit for consistency?
I think this isn't, this isn't math. It's just a consistency thing.
I like that. You have consistency because like I said, I have to apply these things and after a while my brain melts. And so if we use the same decimal each time or the same consistency, it's good for someone like me who has to calculate parking minimums.
Commissioner Dodd?
I agree with not encouraging brain melting. So yes.
Yeah, let's go ahead and make all that consistent. Thank you. All right. Any more deliberations? I think now would be a good time to look at the draft findings, conclusions and recommendations. Commissioner Dodd?
I think you should close the public hearing.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Robson?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on the parking reductions near transit code amendments. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like we have unanimous consent. Now let's take a look at these findings, conclusions and recommendations. Specifically, so we're on page 12 through 15 now of the packet.
Would you like me to pull that up?
That'd be great. Yeah. I don't know if we need to read through these exhaustively, but I would like to take a look, especially at number six through 13. And maybe just take a quick moment for commissioners to read through these very carefully. These would be the things that we would be transmitting to council. So I want to make sure that it captures that our deliberations were.
See if I can get.
Commissioners, please indicate when you're ready to provide feedback. Commissioner Westerbeck, do you have a comment?
I like these. You know, we helped create them over the past several months. They're pretty strong recommendations. I'm glad council is going to be seeing these. I have to, I don't know, I'm not going to say we're going to change, we should change it. Number eight. When we, when we tell people, developers, they have to, you're going to get something, so you've got to give something. I understand that's state law and everything. It's it verges on kind of pretextual planning, too, which someday I'd like to see eliminated from codes, kind of getting, getting them over a barrel. I mean, we need housing and we punish it. We punish the people who build it. And granted, I'm one of them. I make small projects. So I feel this and I work for others who do it. But it's just an interesting thing. I'm glad we've got it in there. But I think someday we need to address that. So that's it. Just a comment.
Commissioner Dodd?
Thanks. Also about number eight, ironically. I, the way it's phrased, it's kind of, I don't know, I had to reread it real quick. I'm wondering if we could say something more like expanding existing transit related parking reductions provides a benefit to developers that encourages development of and justifies affordable housing requirement. Just to kind of, instead of saying provides a benefit to developers, you know, justify, like, just to kind of really spell it out. People can get kind of sensitive sometimes about benefits going to developers. So I wonder if just really making it clear that we're trying to encourage affordable housing with this makes sense. But I'm curious what everyone else thinks.
Yeah, I like that. When I was reading through number eight, it occurred to me that somewhere along the line, it's been a while since we started these, this whole code amendment process, but we changed the language that we were using from parking minimum reductions to parking reductions as well. And that was a really critical kind of finding that came out of the first part of our discussions on this topic, especially as we have community conversations, talking to people about what is at the heart of parking minimum reductions and that it's distinctly different than parking reductions. And so I would like to see wherever parking reductions in these seven findings, I think it only happens twice to be parking minimums reductions. But I would also like to have that corroborated. Yeah. Commissioner Dodd?
I agree with that. I think it's important to say it's not the amount of parking that's being required, just the amount of required. Yeah. So, because that's a, it sounds like a silly distinction up here, but to have someone understands it, I think it's a big difference.
Just so, so you're suggesting that we add reducing parking minimums near transit, for example, in finding seven?
Yes, replacing the words parking reductions with parking minimums, parking minimum reductions. Yeah, Commissioner Robson?
As my eyes glaze over reading through all this very legal language, can I suggest that we As my eyes glaze over reading through all this very legal language, can I, um, suggest that we do, uh, parking minimum reductions, parking minimums with a hyphen? Because if we talk about expanding existing transit-related parking minimum reductions, yeah, I think my eyes glaze over transit-related. So, um, I'm just wondering if we should hyphenate parking minimum. The English teacher in me is coming out here, that's all. Wondering if there's a way to make that more understandable, or if it's just hopeless when it comes to codes.
For the record, you're getting some, um, stifled laughter up here. Uh, yes, this is, uh, I would tend to agree. Uh, this is, these are all kind of run-ons, that's how code is kind of written. And, uh, whether grammatical or not, I do think parking minimums kind of grouping together as a compound word there does make sense, because it is preceded by transit-related. Commissioner Dodd.
I like Commissioner Robson's idea. To be clear, I think I just would defer to, to, uh, Mr. Boyd on whether that's something that the city can do, or if it has to be like a certain, you know. I feel like there's probably a lot of rules that we don't know, too.
Well, I guess I try to use the minimum number of words possible, so that's why I didn't include minimums. But if you, but if you, if you do want to add them, I guess I don't have a strong feeling as far as hyphenating parking minimums, or, um, or not. Well, here, let me, let me show my, share my screen once again. Back to the right. That's not it. Okay, is that big enough to see? Okay. Is that, so, as, as you were talking, I, I was adding minimums in there. And in some places, the hyphen could work. In, in number seven, reducing parking minimums near transit, I, I don't think it makes sense there. Number eight, expanding existing transit-related parking minimum reductions. In, in that case, it makes sense. Are you shaking your head, or are you?
We can't see, um, you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Robson, I can see you on the side of my screen.
Okay, I can tell, I can tell who you're talking to. It's, it's, um, this is a, this is a beast I do not envy you having to wrestle with. But I understand the importance of putting in the word minimums, um, but expanding minimum reductions is becoming, uh, I'm probably just nitpicking. It's probably fine, whatever you want to do. I'm not gonna... Yeah, it's not a hill I want to die on.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, thanks. Sarah Gustafson here. I don't know if we want to just try rewriting the sentence here. I think it's a really important sentence. Maybe we could workshop it a little, like, reducing, oh, Mike Sanger has got a text going on here. But it goes like this, reducing parking minimums provides a benefit to developers. I, I think we might want to go with that. I, I know there's the concept of existing in there, but maybe we could all think about trying to explain it to someone and write it down.
Let me fill out.
Yeah, I would also concur. Um, and yeah, thanks for, um, all for navigating this, wordsmithing live. It's great. Now it says, reducing parking minimums provides a benefit to developers that encourage, maybe should be, encourages housing development and justifies affordable housing requirements. Commissioner Dodd.
I would say take out the comma after developers, and we have a sentence.
Great.
And that is my last English-related thought, I promise.
All right, well, I think that number eight has gotten a lot of eyes on it, which is excellent. And now I want to open for any other comments that I didn't go down this rabbit hole on number eight, but anything else that we noticed, noticed? Or are we ready for a motion? To be clear, this motion would be to adopt the findings. Uh, can we, um, stop sharing the screen really quick?
Before we do, in, in the other cases in, in nine, 10, and 11, do we want to hyphenate parking minimum?
I think where parking minimum reductions is the phrase, then it should be hyphenated, but it should not be. If it is not. Oh, Commissioner Dodd.
I, my, my thought on the hyphenation is do what feels right as you go through this. Like, I, I don't want to get to where you're having to go through each individual item with us to, you know, I don't want to... That's not the way we want you to spend your night, Dave.
No, I, I've already got it there, so, um, and I'm seeing, uh, Commissioner Robson shake, nodding her head vigorously, so.
Follow your heart.
Commissioner Gustafson, do you have a comment?
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner Kurt. Sarah Gustafson here. For number 10, could we simply say reducing parking minimums for corner lot duplexes will facilitate? And just take out the word applying. So... Reducing parking minimums. And then skip to four. Take out reductions and take out adopted. And then, let's see if it still reads right. Reducing parking minimum for corner lot duplexes near transit and trails. And then two other... Oh, I see, I'm sorry. Reducing, oh, I see what you're saying.
I think we actually need to take this one out, because we're going to defer that to the middle housing.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
I'm seeing a lot of nodding.
So I'll, I'll need to renumber, but.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
You did it for me.
The magic of Microsoft Word.
Okay.
Great.
Do you want me to stop sharing?
If you could, thank you. Want to make sure I see everyone.
Okay.
Excellent. Commissioner Dodd.
I move to adopt the findings.
What? And the findings include the code amendments and exhibits, so.
Yeah, I, I move to adopt the findings, code amendments, and exhibits for parking reduction near transit.
Is there a second?
Sarah Gustafson here, I will second that, and it looks like Claire will second it, too.
Great. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstention? Looks like the, uh, motion passes. Thank you unanimously, I didn't hear everybody, but.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Sanger, for coming to the meeting tonight.
Thanks, Mike, for giving us more your night, your, your night again.
Great. All right. With those two items done, we'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
I'm sure there is, but I can't think of any right now.
That's fair, you've been on the spot, thank you. Reports from staff, anything you need to share?
No.
All right. Uh, reports from members? I always have a report, and I am a member. Uh, yeah, so middle housing tour went really well last week. It was on Friday in the afternoon. The material was provided by BOPAP, Bothelites for People Oriented Places. Uh, there were about 20 people who joined from the community. It was great to also see interim director Winchell, planner Mand, and planner Schmeck. Thanks, everybody who made it out. It was really great conversations, and also pretty encouraging to hear, um, hear people's feedback on middle housing once they saw it. I think, um, uh, moving forward as the city proposes, um, things, getting out and seeing it in person is, uh, fundamentally a different way of looking at it than on a survey online or something, so that went really well, I think. There were good conversations. Not everyone was, um, agreeing on every issue, but, um, there was definitely some consensus that was built, which is great. A couple of other items. Surface water management, the city of Bothell just issued their 2022 stormwater management program plan, and they're requesting feedback. It's, uh, on the city's webpage. One of the items that they are focusing on in 2022 will be, um, yard care practices that, uh, um, are prioritizing streamside landowners. Um, we have a lot of waterways in city of Bothell that, um, people live near, and I want to make sure that, um, yard care practices are working with, you know, long-term plans about stormwater and water quality. So that's exciting. Feedback is requested. And then another item to note is that, um, North Creek Trail, uh, just north of the city, uh, is finally the, the first phase that goes in through basically Bothell's municipal urban growth area, um, is done. So the ribbon cutting, I think, is being held tomorrow. I don't know what time it is, but you can look on Snohomish County's webpage for more information if you're interested in that. I think that's an exciting piece of the bike plan puzzle. Um, and it's a great way for people on the north side of our city to, and from beyond, to access businesses and services in the Thrasher's Corner area specifically. So that's exciting. Are there any other reports from members? Yes, Commissioner Westerbeck?
I just thought about it. Right now, as we're meeting, um, there is a presentation over at the city of Kenmore, which is also concurrently doing missing middle, um, code changes and studies. And they have, uh, an excellent speaker, Karen Perolak, I hope I pronounced her name wrong. Her, her firm, along with her partner, Dan, they invented the, the term missing middle about a decade ago. And she gives, I think, the best presentation in the country on missing middle. Seen it before. So, um, it's recorded, um, so people can go watch that after tonight. I'm going to go watch it, of course. So I encourage anyone out there in the public, um, and anyone else seeing us right now, to watch it. Uh, she's, she's the best.
Thanks for sharing. Yeah, Commissioner Gustafson.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Kurt, for leading the missing middle walk again. My question for you is, I would love to hear more about the residents who came, and how many, and how did they find out about this?
Uh, great questions. Uh, yeah, so, Commissioner Westerbeck, if you want to jump in too, and correct my memory if I'm misremembering, but there were about, you know, 18 to 20 people that were there. Um, a biggest turnout, I think, we've seen. A large turnout, yeah. We did have snacks, so that helped. And, uh, we began the walk here at the, um, City Hall Plaza. And, um, there are people from, you know, our city, residents, um, and also, um, people who, uh, work in Bothell, uh, that attended as well. And some that, I think, just came from other nearby cities, too.
We also had, uh, several people, three or four, from livable Kirkland.
Okay, yeah.
Because they were really interested, because they're doing similar work there, and they were really interested in the kind of things we're doing.
Yeah, so it was, um, a mixed group, but there was, in general, a variety of different, um, kind of, understanding of what middle housing is. There were some people who had taken the survey prior, uh, the city's, um, survey, and, um, not everyone who met up with us at City Hall Plaza went on the walk. There were a couple of people that trailed off or, um, went to do other things, but, um, yeah, and there were some, um, concerns about, um, the tour being held around, and, and walking isn't, um, feasible for everyone, too. So there were some, um, questions of whether we could record, and that we weren't set up to do that sort of thing. So that was something to consider for the future. Some of the perspectives that were shared, um, people generally really liked, um, ADUs when we saw them. There's some carriage houses, uh, on 102nd, uh, yeah, 102nd specifically, that we walked right next to, and, um, people were excited to point that out and see it. There was, uh, considerable discussion about affordability, and whether, um, producing or developing a new, uh, middle housing form would result in an immediate, um, affordable unit, which we all know here on the commission isn't necessarily the, you know, that's not the point of middle housing, is, um, also to offer different housing forms and, um, and trying to get at affordability from a more macroeconomic scale. There's also, uh, some discussion about, you know, a, a lot could be developed with a single-family residence, or perhaps a duplex, and with the base cost of the lot, um, a duplex, you could get twice as many units out of the cost, and doing some cost share on the land. So that was, um, interesting to hear people's feedback, and, um, you know, some, uh, for me, one of my reflections is, um, constantly learning about how other people learn these topics, and how, um, really complex they can be. And so, um, I was encouraged to hear that people were understanding some things, and maybe there's some places that we can work on, especially around, um, I, I think when you start framing numbers, uh, there's some glossing over of eyes, to borrow Commissioner Robson's term. And so that's a place that I think, um, the messaging, um, and some of the conversations that we have can really be aware of. So, I hope that's helpful.
I, I will note, this is really common, um, that there's always a couple people who have no idea that, um, you can only build a single house in an ADU. Often, they don't even know about the ADU, but they don't know that you can't build a duplex or a triplex. They, they're just completely shocked, because just not something that they've ever thought about. And so I think it's a little bit of a, um, you know, a, a shocking kind of, really? When they find out a person couldn't just choose to build a duplex instead of a single-family home. So that's kind of one of the aha moments, you know, we, we get to have. I think that's good. People realize that there are real restrictions, and they didn't even realize they were there.
Thanks. Are there any other reports from members? Seeing none, are there any items to report to council? All right, uh, there being no further business. All right, there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Dodd.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
I will second the motion to adjourn the meeting.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The motion is unanimous, the meeting is adjourned at 7:51 PM, and our next meeting will be on October 5th. Thanks, everybody, for joining.
Thank you, have a good night.
Bye.
Bye, Claire.